Up here, we have paper number 11,496. Communication submitted by Council President regarding a presentation by Judy Grinnell for the design and development of the Housack River Revival. Without objections, I will file the communication, and I know Counselor Bullet, if you want to do a brief introduction as a member of that organization.
Thank you. So, I'd like to take just a moment to introduce Judy Grinnell, and she's joined by Nick Nelson of Interflue Incorporated. And it has, I wanted to say that Judy has been a resident, is a resident of the city, and she's been a local member for four decades, and she's done some significant work. She's the founder of the Housack River Revival as well. She has been a volunteer on many, many community projects, and she is also professionally was a French teacher. She has raised three children in the area. She's conference director and publishing sales manager. And for the past eight years, Judy has taken on the restoration, and this baby of hers, we'll say, to bring it this far, and it's reaching points of far-reaching than we think. It's part of the whole revitalization of North Adams, and it's such a big part of the city that I think this is just amazing, and it's a daunting project, but she continues to drive on. So, we also have several board members from the Housack River Revival that have joined us as well. So, thanks for coming, Judy.
Thank you. Thank you for that nice introduction, and thank you, Ben, for making time for us. We are delighted to be here. This is our fourth, oops, sorry, this is our fourth update to the council, and so we will not go into very much history. Our plan is to show you the movie that we have created, which is going to help us tell our story and help us find support so we can really get this river changed. I would like to acknowledge the people from the Board and Advisory Council who are here. Jake Lofner, just raise your hand, and Lauren Stevens, and behind him Richie Doucette and Marion Grillen on our Advisory Council, Dave Willett, who is our Vice President. And sitting in the front is Nick Nelson, who is the person at Interflue, one of the two firms that worked so closely with us on the design, and his specialty is river restoration. And what we're going to do is show the movie. We're going to lead into the design. We've gone from dream to design, and then we will talk about what's next. Okay? So, if the technology works, we're ready to roll.
Fingers crossed.
Okay. I think. Wait one second. I got it. Warm greetings from North Adams, a small city nestled within the foothills of the Conic and Green Mountains. Surrounded by extraordinary natural places, the city also harbors many remnants of an industrial heyday. Its skyline dotted with 19th-century church spires and its roads lined with outsized mills. Through the middle of it all flows the Housack River, which sustained the industries of this western Massachusetts city until the 1940s. The Housack is no longer harnessed for power, but for many, it offers respite and tranquility. And just outside the city center, the river shows its wildness, running clear and cool as a mountain stream. In fact, it is one of the only large rivers in Massachusetts still supporting a native trout fishery. But our beautiful river also has a dark side. The Housack has periodically overflowed its banks, flooding whole sections of the city. So, in the 1940s, the Army Corps of Engineers was asked to manage these floods. Their solution was encasing the river in two-and-a-half miles of concrete shoots, which have indeed saved the city. However, imposing vertical walls 10 to 20 feet high with 45-foot concrete floor has transformed the river, eradicating habitat, curtailing access, and partitioning the city. This engineered solution for containing the river destroyed its beauty and its ability to support fish and other stream life. The Housack in downtown North Adams is an inaccessible, unattractive, and inhospitable scar running through the city. After more than 60 New England winters, the pounding of spring milk waters and a few hurricanes, the shoots are now showing their age. Several 20-foot wall panels have collapsed. If they are to continue to protect the city, these aging structures need expensive repairs. With so many reasons to rethink our flood control system, a group of residents formed the Housack River Revival to explore if a 21st-century flood management system could protect North Adams while also bringing the river back to life. Fortunately, there are many examples of successful projects which combine river restoration and flood control. Denver, Colorado built amphitheater steps down to the water at the confluence of the Platte and the South Platte rivers. It's designed to be inundated by the annual spring floods, yet it provides community recreation space the rest of the time. Functional steps instead of a barrier wall contain floodwaters. As the river returns to normal flows, the water drains off. Confluence Park proved so popular that Denver expanded upriver with bike and pedestrian trails inside the formerly concrete channelized river. To enhance habitat, a low-flow channel for fish and recreation was also created, complemented by greenery along the riverbanks and trails. Many cities have embraced river restoration and the multiple benefits it brings. In Rhode Island, South Carolina, California, and even South Korea, cities have rediscovered their rivers. Studies of these river transformations prove what most of us already believe: an accessible, beautiful waterway draws tourists, supports city businesses, and enhances the quality of life for wildlife and people. Because the Housack's two branches flow right through the city, restoring the river will open connections to the city's historic, recreational, and cultural assets. The possibilities are tantalizing: open-air markets, riverside events, urban orchards, agriculture, fishing, and public art. A visionary transformation of our former mills is evidence of a new era and shifting economy for North Adams. This once idle mill is now alive with artists; its space reworked for living and creativity. And Mass MoCA, a former textile mill complex, now the largest contemporary art museum in the country, straddles both branches of the Housack. Enhancing the river corridor with art would be a natural extension of this museum. As with these once-empty buildings, creative thinking will also transform our sterile concrete shoots from an eyesore to an asset. Thanks to eight years of extensive community outreach by the River Revival, with residents, local and state officials, and the Army Corps of Engineers, combined with $800,000 from individuals, businesses, and the state of Massachusetts, our organization, a priority project with the state of Massachusetts, has moved from dream to design. Our Phase 1 location is an area popular with the public and adjacent to downtown. The design has been undertaken by the nationally and internationally recognized firms of Interflue and Sasaki Associates, and the goal is to restore the river in stages, with this first section showing the way for revitalizing the rest of the south branch and eventually the north branch. What will a restored river do for North Adams? We're confident it will accomplish four major objectives. First of all, it will improve the river ecosystem. Secondly, it will link our historical and cultural resources. Third, it will enhance our quality of life. And lastly, of great importance, it will promote economic development for one of the poorest cities in Massachusetts. And of course, we will also maintain or exceed the current flood protection. North Adams is witnessing its next great adventure: a new economy rekindled by the arts, educational opportunities, and recreational activities. The restoration of the Housack River is a critical part of this vision. We hope you agree. Supporting the Housack River Revival is a good investment. Thank you so much for your interest in bringing our city and our river back to life. Okay.
Thank you.
So, this leads right into Nick's presentation, where we'll talk about what we see as the best thing that's happened so far: a design of the south branch. Let me get out of here. You can do it. Okay. It's all yours.
Thank you. Um, let's see. Nick, you want lights on? Off? Um, let's just see how this comes out. Is it hidden somewhere?
Oh, it's right there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There we go.
And then we'll put that, this up. Oh, no, that's right. Okay.
Great, thank you. Okay, so I'm just going to get right into this. That was a great background for the entire project. And so Judy showed this in the movie. Sorry.
It's for the homes.
Got it, so I won't wander around.
You might be able to actually take that mic off if you want to hold it.
Okay, I'll try to stay put.
Okay.
So, we'll focus on the pilot area, the focus area, in just a bit, but this is an overview of the whole study area of the south branch, from Hunter Foundry Road up here down to Mass MoCA and the confluence with the north branch down here. There are lots of details in here that I'm not going to get into on this slide yet, but as we move into this slide, this kind of shows how we thought about the whole system here of the south branch. There are different areas here that allow us to do different things in terms of restoration and revitalization designs. So, at the upstream end, where there is some more space to work and there is not as much industry or buildings right next to the river, we call that the wild, and that's where there might be more ability to have some fishing and biking along the sides. Downstream is the park area. This is where all the ball fields are and a lot of recreation, and this is a really important component of the designs, and we know it's a very important component for the city here. So, as I'll mention later, we are maintaining the existing ball fields that are there and increasing the amount of overall play space in this area. Downstream is the gateway. This is kind of the, we thought about the connection between the recreational park area and downtown. There's a lot of infrastructure along the riverway here, a lot of bridges that cross the river, so it's a bit more complex. And then further downstream being the Mass MoCA complex at the confluence there. At the upstream area, as Judy mentioned in the video, habitat is an important part of this overall design. Sorry about that. These, there we go. So, this is where we were able to meander the stream a little bit. So, the river is a straightened channel right now, and we were designing in some meander bends through here. I'll get into some details in a little bit later, but these are backwater areas here for holding places for fish. There's some pools, some faster-water areas, still while maintaining the ball fields in this area. This is an illustrative plan looking at the ecological benefits of river restoration. You have your pools on the outside of the meander bends here, which are great for fish habitat and other aquatic organisms. These point bars, which might be sand or gravel bars here, and then these faster-water areas, which are great spawning habitats as well. And all of this creates a nice complexity for different organisms. So, the pilot area, as Judy mentioned, the utmost importance is maintaining the flood protection, and I want to be clear that this is running through our heads the entire time while we were doing these designs and a very important part of this. So, the other benefits certainly are the ecological services, improving fish passage through here, improving aquatic organism habitat and terrestrial habitat. Also, the recreation component, increasing overall recreational space, maintaining the ball fields, soccer field here, softball and baseball fields, and the larger ball field there. Aesthetics, improving the aesthetics, and also the economic benefits that was touched on earlier. Because, just bounce back here again, as you know, all of the recreational fields right now are on this side of the existing river. What we've done with this plan here is to flip some of those recreational fields to the opposite side of the river. This allows us to increase the meander here of the river, which increases the channel length and potential habitat for aquatic organisms. It also provides additional space for recreational opportunities, but it also is a barrier between these two fields and recreational areas. So, to alleviate that, there is a footbridge designed right across here, and also there's access across the bridge here and a driving access over here with a parking area on this side. So, there's access to both sides, and this is the footbridge that we have conceptually in the designs right now to provide access across the river here. Connectivity is a big component of this overall project: connecting people to the river, connecting people across the river, and connecting people from the river to downtown. So, these bridges, whether they're footbridges or the road bridges, are very important. This is getting into the more detailed engineering designs, so I'm not going to get too technical here, but just wanted to explain what you're looking at from an ecological standpoint. These outside meander bends here, these lines here are all pieces of large wood, logs and logs with root wads, and those are very important for habitat complexity, for fish, for the insects that live in the rivers and other organisms. They also provide bank stability and allow for a pool to develop right on the outside there for fish habitat. These grade areas here are those faster-water areas. So, you have a mix of deeper pools, shallower faster-water areas, and then these areas on the outside of the bends focused on habitat and bank stability. These are cross-sections shown going across the channel and the whole valley. So, you can see that the flood protection is still provided with a levee on one side. Essentially, the levees that are there now are pushed back to outside of some of the ball fields, and so that's, you can see that right up here, and then that, the large wood is on the base of the channel banks here with the deep pool, and then the sand and gravel bar up here. So, the ball fields are on this side with easy access down into the river, and then this lower cross-section is of one of the faster-water areas, the riffles, which shows some boulders in there and the channel banks constructed. So, the overall cost estimate for this pilot area that we've developed is, for construction, a little over $12 million. With contingencies and design and permitting, it all adds up to about $21 million. And Judy showed a couple of these images, but this kind of gives you an idea of what we anticipate this area looking like. So, this is looking upstream on the concrete wall, looking upstream towards the earth and levees, and this view is close to the same spot where the bridge would cross, looking upstream again with the ball fields on this side and the big baseball field on the opposite side. Trails and bike paths throughout providing recreation. A little bit closer look in the river itself, whether it's fishing or boating or coming down into the river here. And then in the winter, also recreational opportunities, whether it's skating or skiing around those ball fields. And that's all I have for you tonight, so I'll take any questions on that, and Judy as well.
Maybe, why don't I just say what's next, and then we'll open it up.
Yeah, can someone just hit the lights for us real quick?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, wait a minute. Should I just, I can just leave this, right? Okay. Next. We cannot put a shovel in the ground until we get authorization from the Corps of Engineers. So, the design is with them, and we are waiting impatiently and badgering as much as we can without really getting them annoyed. In addition, we're not going to be stopped, however, because we need to be looking at the soil on Knoll Field. That's part of the regulations, and so we will be talking with permitting agencies. We are going to, of course, continue to raise funds, and what we have learned in the preliminary work on trying to raise funds for this is that they are very interested in what's next, not just the Corps, but where are we going and what is it going to look like. To that end, we, the Board has decided that we would begin a contract with Interflue and Sasaki for them to start looking at the north branch, so that we would probably, I don't know, six, eight months, depends on our funding, but as soon as possible, we would have available basically a case, a picture, and financing information for agencies such as the federal government, state government foundations, so that we will be ideally more successful in moving forward. I am sure the $20 million is a bit of a shock. However, to put it in perspective, this is about a half-mile that we're working on. Do you know that the amount of money that was set aside in 1950 to do our shoots was $15 million? That amounts to $3 million then for every half-mile. $3 million, 1950, is $30 million in 2015. So, we're not that far out of the ballgame in terms, and in fact, it's not 20, 30 million, it's 20. Now, granted, we're not doing so much concrete change, so it will probably go up at least to 30, if not more. But that is according to other organizations, and I've looked into Los Angeles. Los Angeles is doing the same thing. They have a budget, which is in the billions, and their cost per half-mile, they expect to be $60 million. I say that all the time to the federal government: we're cheaper, but we're just as good. So, take a look at us. I'd like to say one other thing about the financing of this. It is our intention to raise money so that there is a foundation with funds available for any repair and maintenance that is above and beyond what would normally be occurring in this area. And the economic impact. We have had this project looked at by economic, by economists, and their take on this, and I want to read this exactly because this is not my fort. The impact of this budget would be approximately $32,913,000, with an employment impact of about 250 people over the course of the construction. So, and of course, the $20 million, even without the analysis of the ripple effect, $20 million will be spent in this area. So, now, questions?
Counselor Bona?
Yeah, a couple that I jotted down.
Do we need to stand here?
Yes, you will.
Yeah, she's going to answer questions. Yeah.
And a couple things. When you were showing the last diagrams there, I know you were showing the, I believe you called them, large wood banks, and you talked about sandbars and gravel, and I was just curious, I understand the levees are high enough for, in case of, for floods, but would those hold place too with something like the Katrina-sized floods that we had with those wood and sandbars, or would they all have to be replaced with, like washed out at that time? So, that's one question. I'll throw them out, and you can answer them the order you want. The other is, besides the Army Corps of Engineers, which I know goes beyond the state, but do we have to get any special permission, or are there any exceptions that have to be approved by the state for this to happen? And I keep it at those two.
Okay. You go first.
Okay. So, to answer the first question, the stability question is a great question, and that's something that was going through our heads throughout the designs and will continue to go through our heads throughout the designs. The faster-water areas, what we call the riffles, those are going to have a foundation of very large stone that would be built to withstand the 100-year flood. So, the, it's going to be mixed in with smaller material, but the idea is that it recruits that from upstream also. So, material that might move, the smaller-grain material that might move downstream gains that material from further upstream during those same storms. So, that's how rivers naturally function through that loss and gain, but those riffles would maintain their grade over time. And the large wood also, when they're submerged in water, they last a very long time, and so they're, again, built to sustain the 100-year flood elevations and have done that on other projects. Do you want to touch on the permitting, or do you want me to touch on that? So, there's a number of different permits that have to be obtained for doing any of these types of projects, both state and federal. So, in addition to the Army Corps permits, there's also, the Army Corps needs to approve the modeling for this, but...
That is how the water flows.
Right, how the water flows through here since they designed it. And the state permits include the water quality certifications, dredge fill permits. There's about five or six different permits that we would need to go through: historical and archaeological resources, rare species, all of that.
Okay, thank you.
But to make that seem not quite so onerous, as you know, we are a priority project with the Massachusetts Division of Ecological Restoration. And for that, because of that, we have basically assigned to us one of their employees, and Cindy will walk us through a lot of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Counselor Moulton?
Yes, and to the Chair, to the speakers, I was here many years ago when you first came and brought this forward, and hats off to you and your group. You've done a terrific job. Two questions. One would be, the Army Corps of Engineers controls the flood control. Who becomes responsible once this project is done? Do, is it the towns, the cities' responsibility after that? Do they kind of relinquish that to us, or do they remain in control? And the second question I would have would, from today, how long do you think the project's going to take to finish this first project, you know, in terms of months or years, or is there, is there something on the horizon where you can kind of give us an idea?
Right now, as of a contract signed by the city of North Adams in the early '50s, the city is responsible for repair and maintenance of the flood shoots. I don't know what will happen next. My guess is it will be the same arrangement, but I don't, I don't know that. I don't know why the government would change that. Secondly, our timetable is 2020. We're in the water. That's our hope.
Means a lot to me, 2020.
Counselor Moran, and then Counselor Amerigan?
This pilot, this pilot study is focusing on the south branch. But you had said that there's areas in, in the flood chute that are dilapidated and falling apart, one of your side shows. Is there any pressing issues if failures happen more frequently? You know, I know we're focusing on the pilot, but downstream, whether it's the rest of the south branch or the north branch, as things, conditions worsen if an Irene strikes again, is this kind of paving the way, I guess, for us to move faster with this project as, after the pilot's done, just because of the shape of the flood shoots?
We have had an engineering firm do extensive analysis on the condition of the concrete and to try to analyze why they are falling and/or leaning. We do have several leaning and, of course, one fallen wall on the north branch. There is one leaning seriously on the south branch. We have presented our information to the Corps of Engineers and to our state senators because we are asking them to support us financially. And we have been clear with them that even the engineering firm cannot say how long or when, but it is of concern. Therefore, while this started as an economic development ecological project, we have made it clear to the state and federal government that we see that there are potentially safety issues. And that is one reason why, in addition to having big funders wanting the big picture, we are looking at the north branch. We have more serious concerns on the north branch. The Mass MOCA, the leaning wall on the south branch is being looked at seriously by MOCA because it is right, it's right near them. And they have also brought in the Corps of Engineers. So that's ongoing and is, has nothing really to do with the project except, you know, we may be dealing with it sooner than later. We don't know.
Counselor Amerigan?
Thank you. I wonder if, for my question or topic, if we can bring back up the slide that had the arrows pointing outward? I think, that's when you were talking about connectivity, they were like red or orange arrows, I'm remembering. It was maybe the first slide?
The four sections?
Let's see. Yes. Okay, thank you. So I was interested, and this may be a question for both of you, because Nick, you mentioned it, but Judy, maybe it's something you more want to speak to. I'm just interested in the idea of connectivity to downtown being something that came up. I think it's, this is, you know, so exciting and so beautiful, also in an area that isn't naturally connected to downtown by pedestrian traffic right now. So I'm curious what you guys think about that and if there are asks or recommendations that you have for the city in terms of complete streets planning and walkability planning so that it seems like a natural pedestrian move, perhaps for tourists who are visiting or for residents who are downtown, for that connectivity to be very natural. You know, I'm struck, I was struck when we were on the slide by the arrows pointing outward. But when we think about what it's actually like to walk between downtown and the Onol Field area, it's not necessarily a natural move, if that makes sense.
Our plan was to actually design farther or closer to Heritage Park. The city, we are, as you know, in touch with the city all the time. So the, the plan, my understanding is, I'm sorry the mayor could not be here tonight because he's been such a great supporter, I wanted to cheer him too. But the city is not yet at the stage where they are ready to move on the underpass that is going to connect American Legion Drive to the river. And so we decided when there, it made sense for us to go, move together. And the design that Interfluv and Sasaki had for people to connect from American Legion Drive to the river was quite revolutionary. It's been done one other time. But the other reason we stopped was because we didn't want that, which might have made the Corps pause a little bit, stop the whole project. So it was a combination of the city and the Corps. But we're, we really are committed to working to have the bike paths. So we've got bike paths all along the upper portion of that, that design and all along the bottom. One will be the official bike path and the other will be what's called in the business a pedestrian path. And so, so it's, we're connecting with that. We also are very aware of the scenic train. It's very important that people be able to get from the future little railroad station we're going to have to be able to get over to Heritage Park and come here. So we're, we stay in touch more than one would believe, but we really think, it's like putting a puzzle together, and it's very important that the puzzle match.
I think, just to add on to that, I think one of the big gaps in connectivity is, is this area here because of, you know, the private properties that are along there. So that's something that we were talking about throughout the designs. And you can clearly see that, you know, there's access kind of along this road here, but there's no way to get down into this area. So that's, that's a clear challenge.
Yes, we're, we're hoping also that MCLA has a quicker route down to the river, especially with their new science center. And you can see that dotted line at the very bottom there of the wild, can you? It, it may be that we can make a connection, no, up top, yeah, right there. A connection going from there to the campus. There, there is a way, it's just, you know, the reason we, among others, we chose this area is that it's almost totally city-owned property. And so we would not be held up by having to raise a lot of money for property.
Counselor Buddington?
Yes, Mr. Nelson, I share Counselor Bona's curiosity about the stability of this. My, some, I have some background in earth science, and it seems to me rivers are known for not staying put. And I'm, I'm fascinated, I love this idea. I'm fascinated by your strategy of using natural materials in a permanent fashion. And I'm curious, has this been tried before? And how long, how long has, have such things been in place? What kind of track record is there?
Sure. So just for perspective, river restoration, river revitalization is new. So it's really only been going on for the last 30-plus years or so. So in terms of, you know, 100-year perspective, we don't have that. But this, same types of designs have been done in San Antonio, and we worked on those designs that were put in place. Same type of a flood control system, Army Corps system, similar types of riffle stone and pool habitat there. So all, all within those levees that were pushed back. So those have certainly been tried and true since their construction period. They've lasted through some large floods. On other projects, we've had these wood banks and riffles last through the 50, 75-year storm that happens to come through. So, you know, you never know what's going to happen with a 500-year storm or something like that. But in terms of the stability of these designs, they've been tested around the country and held up pretty well.
Okay, that's reassuring. And I do remember a news story from several years ago that Confluence Park was tested with a fairly serious flood and, and came through just fine.
Counselor Blackmore?
Through the Chair, I just, I want to thank Judy for doing this, for bringing this presentation in. You said you've done this four times. I think I've been here for all four of them. I've been following the project. One of the questions, the comments is, you're talking about, we're talking about the stability of the flood control as it is now. If we do nothing, if this project doesn't go through, somebody's going to have to spend money to fix it and bring it up to date and make it safe regardless. So why would we chase good, bad money after good? I don't know. Whatever the phrase is. Let's just make it right and not spend an exorbitant amount of money to fix something only to have it not be nice. I guess this is what I'm looking at. I get the feeling we're going to have to spend money regardless. Let's spend money on a project that moves the city forward.
Counselor Bullock?
Through the Chair. I wanted to just touch on the, this is a great slide to show what my question is, has been asked of me from an athletic standpoint. And Judy, we've had this discussion. You mentioned about connectivity and for somehow, for some reason, I feel like there's a disconnect with having softball fields placed on the other side of the river. In addition to that, the other question was the soccer field, which is located now where I believe DeSantis softball field, if I'm correct. If that is of dimension, that will also host football as well as soccer? I don't know if that's been planned. And also the design of the fields, as an athlete, I, I kind of, kind of look at that kind of funny.
So essentially, the, the space that is there existing currently was traced and just rotated into place. So the dimensions of the soccer fields or football or lacrosse or field hockey or whatever it ends up being, that space that's there right now was traced in the air photo and just kind of moved and oriented in that direction. So the dimensions should be the same, and same thing for the softball fields on the other side.
The connectivity.
Yeah. I mean, that's one, that's also a piece, but also with regard to the field's design themselves and location, I guess, not just the strategic size of them, how they're placed matters when you play. And I just want to make sure, because it's, it's an ongoing conversation with regard to design, whether or not it's something that, if it's found that it's not sitting the way that it should be or could be, is there room in this plan to move things around?
Yeah. You know, I think this is, and jump in if you'd like, but these are preliminary designs. So there's, there's room for changes here. They were oriented in that way because the outer fields kind of fit with the meander bends there. And you can kind of have both, all the dugouts in one area there together by the parking lots, so it kind of made sense in that respect. There's a athletic field designer with Sasaki Associates that we brought into this conversations to talk about, you know, orientation, sun, all that stuff. And so that's, that's been worked into these designs. But we are certainly open to, you know, suggestions or strong feelings and, and some of that can be altered with the space that's there. Connectivity, do you want to chat about that? So there's the, the footbridge. Come on. There we go. Footbridge right across here. The levees will be right over here. So you've got a path on top of the levee that then goes across the bridge to the levee on this side as well. Parking lot over here on city property with access out to that road crossing here. There's, right over here is what we've put in as a low-flow river crossing. So not a full-on footbridge, but I think you saw in some of the images Judy showed with stepping stones or a low-flow crossing that water can still go through, but you can walk across when it's not being flooded. So that's, be kind of an accessway on the upstream side. Those orange lines that you see are all the paths around the ball fields.
Counselor Bullock?
And just to, just to follow up, was there, was there a reason for the bend to be placed there? I expect that there was.
The meander, can we?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
It's a great question. It's, historically, that is about where the meander bend was before this was all filled in and straightened. So on the opposite side, on this side, between the scrap metal yard and the Samard property is an old meander bend over here also. So the river used to go like this and then this way, or pretty close to that. So besides almost achieving that, it's also the only place to go. You know, the existing channels here can't really go this way because of the scrap metal facility and the railroad yard there. So we did fool around with different orientations of the bends and further upstream also, but this really seemed to be the only spot where we could maximize that bend while still keeping the, the main baseball field intact in its existing location.
Does it also slow down the river and the meander rather than having an upstream shot?
Do you want me to say that in the microphone?
Sorry.
No private talk.
No private talk.
What I said was, the meander also slows down the river so that we can have access in it. You may recall, I've said here a couple of times, the goal of the Corps of Engineers was to get the water through the city as fast as possible. So that even starts at the, where we have the riprap and the, and the levees. So this will slow it down and make the river accessible to people. One of the things in our 50 or so meetings that we had, people said, we want to be able to use the river and not just look at it, but to use it. So you have to slow it down if you're going to use it and make it safe for people.
Counselor Buddington?
I should probably mention that I'm married to Elena Traister, who's on the board of the Whistler River Revival. And so you might think I know these things already, but I don't. I'm, I'm under the impression that the high temperature of the river is partially caused by the flood shoots and makes it harder to have good fish habitat. Would this design do anything significant to lower the temperature of the water?
Yes, I guess I'd say nominally at this point because it's such a short stretch of river. It's a half mile of river, but with the large wood on the outside bends, those provide cover and that helps to cool the river down. Having vegetation along the channel banks will help to cool the water down as well. So yes, this is the start of that process. And as we continue to move up and downstream, that will continue.
Thank you.
Great question.
Counselor Boucher?
Through the Chair, to the Board. I just, a couple of my questions were answered along the way, but I just want to take a minute to praise, praise all of you for your vision and dedication to this project. Because I remember many years ago when I sat on this board, you came in front of us with an idea. And you know, what you've done over time is, is quite amazing. You took a vision and you made it a reality. And congratulations to all of you.
Yeah. All of us. There are about 30 of, the most interesting thing, first of all, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Sorry. The most interesting thing about this is eight years ago, when 30 of us gathered, and my question was, you want to work with me on what some might think is a crazy dream? Almost all of those people are still involved, either as board or advisors or financial supporters. It has been really a community effort. I don't deserve all the credit.
Counselor Bona?
Yep. The rounds go and see if anything, I had a couple others. Through the Chair. I still find these wood banks interesting. I know you've answered a couple of questions. And so I know they would survive the 100-year storm or the storm of all ages that we just had. And, but how, how do they last as decay? I mean, does the wood rot over time and would need to be replaced oh, so many years? Because, I mean, they look like fairly large bankings and I'm picturing fairly large logs. So I didn't know if there's a cost factor in that. And then also, has anything like this been done? Because it was sort of a second part of my question I asked before about special permitting through the state. Has anything been done in Massachusetts close to this or similar to, so they're like, oh yeah, we've done that, you're, you're fine? Or is this like going to be really new for some of these people approving this?
Yeah. Both great questions. To touch on the first one, the, the idea with building large wood into riverbanks is to provide bank stability and habitat over the near- to provide bank stability and habitat over the near and long term. When this wood is submerged in water, it can last sometimes 100 years or more. Actually, I just saw a wood dam that was submerged by the impoundment from another dam. And those pieces of wood were 300 years old that were perfectly intact. So when it's underwater, it stays intact quite well. The idea though, is that the banks above that wood is going to be vegetated with different types of woody vegetation, shrubs and trees. And over time, as those shrubs and trees grow up, they will eventually essentially replace the wood in the river as well over time. And that's what happens in our natural systems. Does that help answer your question?
Yes, yep.
Great. From the permitting side and whether this has been done elsewhere in the state, we worked with the same project manager at the Division of Ecological Restoration on the North Nashua River in Fitchburg, which was a similar concrete flood shoots. It was much smaller in scale, but it broke down some of those concrete walls and allowed access in. There was a little park on top. From a ecological restoration standpoint, there are lots of these going on around the state, from dam removals to 250-acre wetland restoration projects in Plymouth that we're working on right now. All of those go through the permitting process. And just last year, the regulations were changed so that there's kind of a specific restoration permitting process that, you know, the, the regulating agencies are more and more comfortable with this process now. So I don't see that as being a holdup, other than it being a very big and challenging project.
Thank you.
Any final questions from counselors? Any questions from the community members?
I don't have a question, but I want to-
Yeah, you want us to come up to the mic here real quick so we can hear you? Thanks. Name and address for the record, please?
David Willett, Oak Hill, North Adams, Mass. Just to summarize, I guess, if I can, the two things you counselors are going to hear the most are, what are we going to do for flood control and what are we going to do for flood control? Okay? And the Army Corps of Engineers, like Judy says, the Army Corps of Engineers has to approve this and they prove it what's called modeling, where they take our river, put it in a computer, and then they put water down. And water is measured in cubic feet per second or CFS. And to clarify that, when you drive over the Deerfield River and you see it when it's really low, well, that's about 100 CFS. When it's really ripping after a big rainstorm, that's about 800 or 900 CFS. I believe the highest reading ever here, Lauren, was 1,200 in the South, 12,000 in the South Branch?
Yeah, 12,000.
12,000. All right, so it's 10 times what you've seen the Deerfield River at its highest. But anyway, my point is, I think the plan calls for adding even more walls by the Sons of Italy, is that correct? Isn't that correct? Adding a few more walls?
Not more walls, but a-
I, yeah, I thought-
Kind of the transition in there.
Yeah. Okay, sorry. So, and, and the Army Corps of Engineers will test all this, they'll take our design, put it in a computer and say, okay, let's give it 12,000 cubic feet per second. And they see, well, it goes over the bank here, well, it doesn't go over here. And they'll know. So they have, they have to sign off on it. So again, so when your constituents come up to you and say, well, what about flood control chute? Just tell them it's taken care of.
And if Dave's on your board, it gets taken care of.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, it was a wonderful presentation. I know I got a lot out of this.
Thank you for all the time with the questions. Appreciate it, Ben.
Thank you for all the work you have going and you're continuing to do.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, moving on to-